General meeting of the Rattone City Commission. I blank, and we have roll call please.
Mayor Sigata.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present. You all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the Rattone City Commission meeting. Next meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th, 6:00 p.m. here in the commission court. We have a notice of potential form, a form that city commissioners may attend to court bearing to be held at the H Judicial District Courthouse located in Rattone on October 24th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. regarding case number D-809-CV-2013-00205, Mark Van Bustert and Lori Van Bustert versus the city of Rattone. And at this time, we do have one proclamation for the evening. Proclamation, Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2019. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation have reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyle, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the city of Rattone firmly commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved, do I, James Neil Sigata Jr., mayor of the city of Rattone, hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2019 as Red Ribbon Week. And I encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free town. The witness hereof, I have here and to set my hand in cause of the seal, the city of Rattone be affixed this 22nd day of October, 2019. We have some folks here.
I have something.
Cool. Don't be shy. All right. All right. Thank you, Officer. Would you like to say anything about it?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what to say. I know I'm hosting an event with each of the schools, Longfellow, Rattone Intermediate, and the Rattone High School within this week. They'll be doing everyday different types of education on drug prevention and alcohol use, prescription medications, and illicit drugs. I'm just really excited for the kids to have that event.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, appreciate you doing it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I should have introduced Officer Martinez. He's serving as our school resource officer, doing a great job with the schools.
Right on.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Did everybody get a ribbon? The pledges are hanging right outside here on the wall for everybody who'd like to fill one out. Also available to everyone in the audience, there's pledges there and red ribbons for everybody.
I need one more ribbon.
Couple more.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Here, thanks first here. All righty, at this time, we will take comments from the general public. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? All righty. Next item is committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
All right. The first thing I'd like to discuss is the Outdoor Recreations Conference that I attended in Silver City, October 3rd and 4th. There were many quality, high-level speakers from political to public and private lands and business owners, and I did already pass out some notes. I have some more copies if anyone would like one. And I'm going to go ahead and highlight a few key points that came up in that meeting. First was, as a state, we're fortunate to have top-down approach led by our governor, which will allow for more funding and support for statewide outdoor recreation economy. On a federal level, outdoor recreation is a strong rope industry and contributed 2.2% to the GDP in 2017. They also noted that consumers are shifting from goods to experiences, and most of those experiences are going to be outdoor rec-related. They also said outdoor recreation is recession-proof because people still travel for kids' sports and still go trail running or hiking. They cut out big things like trips to Hawaii. So a lot of what we do outside is still, we don't give that up. And it's been noted that rural communities in the West are changing, as we well know, that traditional jobs are declining, and that rural economies need an amenity lifestyle and outdoor recreation economy to survive. And so there are two basic things to consider with that. First, residents need in-town quality-of-life recreation components such as walking trails, green spaces, and sports fields. And someone said, if you create cool, quality places to live, people will move there. So in my consideration, that would include things, the value of things that we have like Climax Canyon, Goat Hill, the Old Pass, Roundhouse, and other parks and trails. And as we develop these areas, it will help attract that younger workforce and build our economy that we're looking for in our development plan. And then second, a lot of it was focused on better utilizing partnering and marketing with our public lands, including designation or upgraded designation of public land. For example, White Sands National Monument is being elevated to a national park, and they expect 100,000 more people to visit just from that simple designation change, which is pretty amazing. A lot of these other things, they're in the progress, or we're trying to work on them. One thing that I wanted to highlight is they talked about inviting people in with signs, murals, nice sidewalks, beautification, which had a huge impact for making visitors feel welcome and safe. And so I know that we're working on that as a city, have some plans. Also, we need to consider if visitors have a clear path, a yellow brick road per se, when they get here for a successful experience, is it easy for them? Is there easy signage, bathrooms, maps? Is there somewhere that will help them plan their trip? And how well are we already doing those things? And also, they remarked that our lands and trails, and for us especially Sugaree Canyon, is our golden goose. So we have to take care of it too for the future. We don't really, we don't want to exploit it or overuse it to the point where then we can't use it at all. And I think having it managed by the state park has been a big impact in that. They talked about taking time to get it right. The first time that our most important tool was research and data to kind of figure out what we're looking for in our marketing. And the number-one most important thing for good branding, which we're working on, is really good pictures and video. And the number-one place to advertise in a small budget is social media, and I know there's a lot of that going on. And the number-one most important people to sell to are our local residents. So just the value of everyone who's already in Rattone. And just to make sure that we clarify our vision as we move forward, at least for the next 10 years, where we want to be. Those are just some of the really basic highlights. And we do have Axie Navas, our new Outdoor Recreation Division Director for the state, is going to be visiting Rattone for the day on November 14th. So we're looking forward to welcoming her and that experience. I also attended the New Mexico Municipale Board Meeting, October 5th, in Santa Fe, along with Mayor Sigata. Our main discussion was prioritizing annual resolutions. Eleven were selected for priority and grouped into three areas. Highest priority was given to tax-related legislation, specifically GRT Takeback Notification, PERA, and Hold Harmless Distributions. Ranked second highest priority were public safety issues related to EMS, law enforcement, public school safety, and then third priority was funding for libraries, aviation, and courts. Other topics that were not considered germane at this time for municipalities will still be considered as the session moves forward and the governor makes specific calls. And in the meantime, the League is working diligently with interim committees in different areas of interest to try to work on some of these goals. It was also decided to form a task force on the legalization of recreational marijuana from a municipal perspective. Most areas represented there and entities were concerned about the adverse effects of that legalization. And that's all I had. I'm sure the mayor can probably add to that as well.
I just think it was interesting that some of the cities you thought might be behind it were actually not committable, are committing to legalize recreational marijuana. So I thought that was quite interesting.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacamo.
Perfect Johnson, we were in advisory board meeting that's held on September 24th, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. This is the school report for the month of July, 2019, as its fall, information received were $791.06. Funds collected were $84.25. Copies paid were $639.60. Memorial received were $50. Programs held in the library were 16, attended by 48 persons. Story hour held in the library were five, attended by 207 persons. Total money collected for the month of July was $1,960.91. This is a report for the month of August, 2019, as its fall, information received were zero. Files received were $147.30. Copies made were $874.90. Memorials received were $6. Programs held in the library were 11, attended by 47 persons. Story hours held in the library were one, attended by four. Total money collected in the month of August is $1,047.93. September 25th, attended, RPS Service Company Board of directors meeting was held at 5:30 p.m. Financial assistance information was presented and approved by the board members. RPS General Manager sent the challenge report that five more new electrical meters were installed, been installed in test section of town. I think it totaled 22 program meters, working at all, I think, working well. Litigation between RPS and between evil, that is, still me. Assistant General Manager David Teena reported that October 24th is scheduled testing for unit four. And also David raised that different scheduled work to be performed around the city.
Commissioner Chatterley.
What I do, Mayor Pro Tim Schuster and myself went to the water board meeting on the 11th of November, and we discussed the following. We welcomed aboard the new general manager for the water department. He is now currently working. His name is Terry Sykes. The Lake Maloya is 3.5 feet below the spillway at this time, and we're pumping water mainly from the Silron diversion that we have there. The New Mexico Dam Safety Bureau and project funding agreement for Maloya Dam Spillway Relocation Fee, relocation feasibility study was drawn up, and it was not to exceed 240,000. The New Mexico Environment Department issued the temporary water quality standards. It was discussed of the downtown Third Street paving project, utility infrastructure project. The water department, prior to the repaving of the Third Street, will have to replace an old cast-iron water pipe that runs the length of it. Filter plant project and lift station projects are underway and proceeding on schedule. The heart and brilliant project is completed, and we approved financial report for September. Do you have anything?
Just one thing. Just note that the meeting was October 15th, not November.
October 15th?
Yes.
I was there at a different time for that.
He's a magical man.
I also had a Rattone Financial Board meeting on November 7th, October 17th. We reviewed and recommended the financial for FY '20, our first scheduled, and to be presented to the commission tonight. That's all I have.
Mayor. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Very good. Well, Commissioner Chavez did a great job on the water board. On Monday, October 7th, there was a meeting, a board meeting of the Center for Community Innovation, and there are several projects in the work, none of which are really ready to be talked about tonight, although this is a board who's desperately in need of new board members. So if any of you out there are interested, Jeff is in the audience, you can speak with him tonight, and/or myself, happy to take on another board member. And probably most important tonight, he is here to make presentations and announcements on the startup of the boot camp winners. So that will be happening after we're done with our reports. Tuesday, October 15th at noon, the Housing Authority Board met, and their highlights are their NRPA grant project is nearly complete. They've made benches. They sound pretty cool. And they will be set up, some at the Old Pascaline, some at different parks around town, I believe. So that's an exciting project they've been working on. Of course, they're progressing, and probably ongoing bathroom remodels and painting of doors and whatnot, other upgrades to the units. And their big star is that this year, they got their audit completed on time, and it's submitted, so they're just waiting for that. The chamber board meeting met on our last commission meeting, which was Tuesday, October 3rd. So we were here, they were there, and I did get some highlights there, and some transition trying to get new officers in place for their board. But they're progressing on all their projects well.
Cool. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it, all right. For myself, Commissioner Chatterley mentioned, did attend the New Mexico Municipale Quarterly Meeting, was the first meeting of the new officers, and also at that meeting, we did approve the audit for the week. It was an unmodified audit, so that's always a good thing. Mr. Barry and I met with Lisa Sadio within our North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. He will be reporting on that a little bit later, about that meeting, but I think the message coming from them is they would like to be a little more involved in the communities in the north part of the state than they have been in the past, and looking forward to working with our new leadership there. So that was encouraging. And then last week, I attended the quarterly meeting of the area agency on aging, and Ruidoso, their advisory meeting, where we talked about senior citizen, things going around the state. And the biggest topic talking with them down there was, when are we going to get our federal money released? It has not been released yet, so we are kind of waiting on that. And capital outlay, the current process is labor-intensive, to say the least, so we're looking at revising that, hoping that will work out in the long run. And then, of course, with us not getting fully funded yet, minimum wage going up in January to $950, a lot of the senior centers are not prepared to make that leap, so without the additional funding. So it was a pretty intense meeting, but hopefully things will work out. And that is all I have.
Begging your pardon, Mayor. Do you have one more?
Sure, absolutely.
Sorry. October 3rd, there was a meeting with the Early Childhood Coalition of the Governor's Coalition, and they were here at the High Plains Regional Educational Cooperative. I was able to attend that meeting. They have a lot of thoughts. They were basically coming to communities, looking for more or less a needs assessment. What do our communities need in the line of early childhood? What can we offer? Ideas that we have to offer the state? And so it was a very productive meeting. Growing Great Kids, we're the ones who hosted that, along with the High Plains Regional Center.
All righty, anybody else? All right, moving on into the business items. Item 7A, presentation and announcement by Center for Community Innovation for Start Boot Camp Winners. Mr. Barry, Jeff, I guess you're going to take the lead.
All right, good afternoon. So yes, it's been a little, a long time coming, but tonight, we're excited to present some prize money that was awarded by Inbank to support a couple of businesses that participated in the boot camp that we ran in May. And to remind everyone, there was a small business boot camp that was run in May, and it was funded in part by the city of Rattone and the city of Trinidad in a partnership. And we brought in some expert assistance in the form of creative startups from Santa Fe, and we ran this month-long program to help develop, again, entrepreneurship in Rattone. And I think we've all been pretty deep in the economic development world with better cities and understanding what it takes to diversify our economy, and supporting small business and supporting entrepreneurship is a cornerstone for that. And so programs like this boot camp, programs like the current program that Patricia Duran is running with Grow Rattone, these are all essential components to building this diverse economy for us. And so what I'd like to do today is present our winners. These folks sat down across the table from a mean banker in the form of Robert Jones, and Robert grilled them and ran them through the wringer to have them explain their business and their vision. And we have a few winners here to present today. We've got Aaron Senna Stevens. So Aaron brought to us the idea of Roaming Oso, and any of you who are on Facebook these days have seen Roaming Oso and the work Aaron is doing.
Oh, yes, Roaming Oso, what is going to be an online platform, a multimedia platform, and some of the projects, well, let's start off by saying, I love New Mexico. And me being the affectionate bear that's on KRTN, I'm taking my Oso self, and I'm going to be roaming our landscape of New Mexico, but start here in our backyard, and explore the most interesting of people, places, and memories, and start bringing back a lot of history and preserving that, and partnering up with not only the Rattone Museum, but also KRTN. Speaking about some of the projects, they include an interview with a coal miner, and that's going to be a documentary series that I'm going to be producing myself, and sitting down one-on-one with the York Canyon Coal Miners. And you know, this is my first project that I'm going to be working on, because I feel that it's important to preserve that history for future generations, and I feel that it's a responsibility that I have in my life to be able to pass on this information to younger generations and have that key passed to me, so.
Cool.
All right. And then our Facebook followers, as of today, we have over 1,000 followers, not only from Rattone, but the surrounding area. That's just within a month of progress, so it's growing and expanding. And I'd like to thank all the sponsors for the program, and it was the Creative Startups Program, Business Accelerator, it definitely was an accelerator, and you learned all the skills necessary to put all your ideas that you have in your mind onto paper and have an action plan to start your own entrepreneurial venture, so right on.
Cool.
Nice.
Next up, I'd like to invite Marion Ray and Rhiannon Marquez. These two health nuts have been hard at work on a business kaizen wellness, and again, two very active Facebook people as well, always giving us good health tips if you want to engage in that. So thank you, Marion and Rhiannon, for all of that help.
Thank you. We just want to say how excited and honored we are, and really want to tell Inbank how much we appreciate them feeling our passion, and also Jeff, our health and wellness, and we really appreciate your generosity, and the center, and the Creative Startups Program.
Thank you, Marion. Well deserved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Eric, can we get one photo of all of us? Here. Mark, can I? Can we do that? All right.
Thank you, commissioners, for your support with this. I think it was a big dividend.
I think so. Absolutely. Good job. All right. Item B, Report to City Commission, the Shuler Restoration, it says, Mr. Billy Penati.
Good evening, Mayor Sigata. Mayor Pro Tim Schuster, Commissioners Chatterley, Jacamo, Chavez, Mr. Barry, Ms. Antonucci. I'm Bill Denati. I'm with the Shuler Restoration Commission, here tonight to give you the annual report on the state of the Shuler Nation. I say "nation" because the theater is known throughout the nation. It really is. Its beauty, its acoustics, its atmosphere, scores of people and organizations and businesses throughout its 104-year history can take credit for the work, the current conditions, and also the bright future. Shuler Restoration was awarded the management contract for the city on September 1st of 2015. Our duties encompass all aspects of the Shuler, performances, meetings, except we don't do housekeeping or the maintenance. That is left up to the city, and the city is a great partner for the Shuler Theater. We pay our own liability insurance, we pay the phone bill, and up until recently, we were able to have Bill Fegan there in the offices to keep it open during regular business hours. We'll talk about that here in a little while. A big part of our duties, collecting fees from presenters, including their refundable damage deposit, making sure they have insurance. And according to Michael Ann, the collection for rental for the first year that we managed was $1,285. Last year, it was $3,157, and this past year, it was $3,981. So both rental fees and some of that was in the 15% commission charged for concessions on merchandise. The Shuler had over 30 live performances, over 50 rehearsal dates, and also 100 digital movies from El Rattone. So over 180 days of usage, almost half the year, the Shuler was busy doing something. Again, not all live shows or movies, but 180 days of usage. Partners, the Rattone Arts Council, Rattone Main Street, and Gate City Music Fest. Rattone Main Street also helped obtain a big grant several years ago to upgrade the lobby and the restroom and the costume room, and also our digital movie project. Rattone School of Dance, the Lip Sync, Santa Fe Trail School for the Performing Arts, Music from Angel Fire, a candidate's forum sponsored by the Rattone PBW, Rattone Lions Club. One of our most important partners is the Whited Foundation, which helped the Shuler Restoration sponsor the Vienna Boys Choir last November, world-famous. We're also pleased to announce that with the help of the Whited Foundation, SRC and El Rattone are going to sponsor a concert this coming March. You might have heard of them, Los Lobos. Our Vice President, Bill Fegan, still remains on the board while recovering from his stroke he suffered this summer. Of course, Bill's contributions to the Shuler are legendary, and him not being there on a regular basis has really left a big vacuum in the daily operation. He's trying to come back on a part-time status, but a long-term solution is being formulated, and we're looking for ideas. The biggest partner for the Shuler always has been the city. The city realizes that when the Shuler is busy, there is something for people to do. That's why the rental fees are small. $125 for a nonprofit can rent the Shuler for one night. And when the presenters hear that, they just, their jaws drop. It's really a lend-lease, sort of a come and take advantage of it. And again, the city helps with that. They also take responsibility for the upkeep and repair. And you, the commission, gave the okay for Alpha Design to make plans for a much-needed upgrade to the office just north of the lobby. That'll include new lighting, a new concession area coming off the lobby, and the recently completed upgrade and renovation of the downstairs dressing room completely changed the look and feel of that area. In addition to the dressing room, Jeremy Rickliff's of NatuRscapes also reinforced the old footlight area under the front of the stage, and that included some conduit and wiring, so future stage light upgrades can be made. Scott Johnson, Do It Right Electric, helped with new LED lighting fixtures and bulbs downstairs and on the marquee. Oh, it looks good. Made a world of difference. Thanks to Dave Little of Alpha Design, his knowledge and expertise priceless as we continue to upgrade. Many members of the community, Clint Henson, the new band and choir and drama instructor, reinvigorated his student involvement in the theater. A team of young men and women recently cleaned out the wood box backstage, which had been accumulating for a couple of decades probably and was getting to be a safety hazard, but it's now nice and clean. And he had several of his students audition for this year's Christmas carol, which is up and coming. Raton High School shop class, Mike Daniel refurbished the rolling ticket booth in the lobby, the display case donated by Tony Hines and Gracie Hightower. Certainly, the whole community feels a part of the Shuler Theater. Let me toot the Shuler Restoration's horn just for a moment while I have your attention. Past projects, we obtained $70,000 from the Laird Foundation for repair and painting of the front facade, heating system, sound system, a repair and replacement of all the lower-level seat backs for your comfort and safety, safety lighting on the stage, the fly loft and loading door, a purchase of American and New Mexico flags on an ongoing basis for the theater. We, this year, purchased four vertical curtains or legs and one full-stage black for smaller shows, a five-camera video surveillance system, a motion detection burglar alarm. We participated also in the Active Shooter presentation by the Raton City Police and Chief John Garcia, purchased an ad in the Raton Visitors Relocation Guide, purchased replacement Plexiglas for downtown event kiosks. Also, Mike Kowalski, one of our members, recently noticed that some of the WPA paintings in the lobby done by Manville Chapman, excuse me, were starting to lift off in the corners. So he contacted Terry Bumpus, an artist and local Raton resident. He's also Vice President of the New Mexico Capital Art Collection. Terry passed along the name of Adele Cronkrite, head of the Conservation of the Georgia O'Keeffe Museum in Santa Fe. They exchanged photos. Mr. Cronkrite's assessment was that the damage appears very minor, and we are far from having to execute some emergency measures. You have plenty of time. They actually look in marvelous condition and well cared for. So part of the care, we believe, is the fact that the lobby allowed smoking for years, and part of the preservation and shine probably from decades of tobacco use and smoke residue. Future plans include wheelchair-accessible seating, a marquee upgrade, ticket booth in the lobby. We'd like to see a working lift and a new loading dock in the alley for bigger shows. We realize how important the Shuler Theater is to our area. We take our job very seriously. And with great enthusiasm, we thank the city and the citizens of Raton for your support for not only the Shuler Theater, but for the Shuler Restoration. And up and coming Friday, Raton Arts Council has Alliance Brass in the Shuler at 7:00 PM. $20 for adults, and those of you who are seniors, $15, and students are $10. You can't get a better entertainment value on earth. So I will urge you to get off your backsides and come to the Shuler Theater this Friday. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate everything that you guys do down there. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. If I may take one more minute for KRTN Radio. We have always wanted to be downtown. KRTN has. So we asked the Shuler Restoration for a blessing and support of a studio in the Shuler back in October of 2018. It was unanimously approved, one recusal by yours truly. The old saying is, be careful of what you wish for. Little did I realize, all the support, though, that would come to KRTN through the proposed move. All of these aforementioned people and entities and individuals have come through with support and expertise. We have an amazing community. I always say it's one of the best on earth. And thanks to our local businesses, Records, Alpine Lumber, Burns, Enchanted Grounds, I sound like a radio station, don't I? Nana and Nanos in Trinidad also, and local contractors, City, Leonard Zamora with the buildings, Raton City Police, who've come down on numerous occasions when we tripped the burglar alarm accidentally. Raton Fire Department Chief Chris Espinosa, several times we've challenged him too, but he always came up with the plan and the right way to do things. Al Castellini, Ray Castellini, craftsmen. Melinda Marlowe, the artist, woodworker Dennis Russell, Marty Mayfield has helped. They all had their handprint on the project. Locally, our electronics expert Jim Veltrey. And then Don Romero, lifelong resident visionary artisan craftsman, Pink Panther and machinist, a former Raton City Commissioner. He made all the difference in how the things look and came together. Many times, he said, "The building speaks to us." And it does. We just have to listen. So I think that's why he used polenta or cornmeal as texture on one of the walls. So we are happy and happy and charged up to be a part of this great community in the Shuler Theater. So thank you for your support and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. All right, moving on. Item C, Approval of the October 8, 2019 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. You're in your packets.
To approve the minutes as they are?
Second, motion and a second to approve the minutes as they are. Further discussion? All in favor? Go by the sound of aye. Aye, close. Mr. Carey. Item D, Deliverate the NAPs on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet you have a memo regarding the recommendations from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. I was not present at the meeting. I think we have some staff in the room that was present that can answer some questions, but I'm going to read to you from the memo, since it is a short memo. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on October 17, 2019, and recommends award by the City Commission for the following advertising and promotion, award of $1,750 to the Center for Community Innovation to be a sponsor in the KRDO TV, 13 days of giveaways for purchase of a sponsorship package, as well as a local weekend getaway as the prize, so that a lucky viewer can come to Raton and experience the city's Christmas traditions. The intent of this promotion is to advertise Raton's Christmas traditions and increase tourism during the months of November and December. The memo notes that this will be funded through the contingency fund line item.
Big question for Mr. Berry. Make a motion to approve the Lodger's Tax Award for the 1750.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second to approve the recommendation for the Lodger's Tax Award of 1750 to the Center for Community Innovation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Go by the sound of aye. Aye, close. Mr. Carey. Item E, Deliverate the NAPs on the Lodger's Tax Non-Promotional Fund, request for Raton Golf Course irrigation improvement. Give it up. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have talked about a phase of non-promotional Lodger's Tax funding for improvement of irrigation at the Raton Golf Course. And I can report to the Commission that myself and some other staff from City of Raton had met with representatives of Raton Golf Course to audit the work and the documentation. And I can tell you that the work was done in a competent manner. It's working pretty well. That helps us as far as disposal of treated effluent, which we pump to the course and then is applied. And so I think that's a successful phase to this. Now, we have some representatives from Raton Golf Course here that I think would like to address the Commission and discuss their proposal or their request. Mr. Pobor.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. Commissioners, thank you for letting me have this time with you. If you turn to my document on page three, two things. One is, one, I just wanted to give you an idea of what we've done with the funds that you gave us before, how they were spent. We want to be, we want to make sure that you are aware of where we spend these funds, how we spent them, the award that was submitted to have those irrigation parts and pieces put in. The second reason I'm here is to go back out and see if we can't...this would be a perfect time to go back and get more funding. And the reason for that is, in the wintertime, most of these irrigation companies discount their products. Ninety or 80% of the states turn water off and golf courses are closed down during the wintertime. So they don't really sell a lot of parts, and this is where they discount their parts. I think it'd be a perfect opportunity for us to go after some more funding, improve what we have out there. And you'll see on page two, kind of just the history of what we have out there in irrigation. We have about 100 valves. Currently, with the last funding, we fixed 15 of those valves, but originally, prior to that, there were six or seven valves that were put in. So out of the 100, we have about 21, 22 valves that are new. The rest are within 20 years old. They're still working in some capacity. Some of them we have to turn on manually, some we don't. But the parts to get those are decreasingly low and very hard to receive. So as they fail, we have to manually turn on water. We want to pour as much water out there. We want to make sure the city takes all that water and puts it someplace besides downstream. It's a lot easier for us to have that out there at the golf course. If you've been out there, you'll see the course is greener. Those 15 valves, we really concentrated on where golfers play most of their golf, and that's the tee boxes and the greens. So we can really concentrate on keeping that, and that attracts more people to the town. And we recognize that with the stay and play. If you look at what we've done there, we're starting to get more and more people doing a trip to Denver, stay here, go to Denver, come back and stay. So we're seeing that return on investment with the stay and play. You'll find that other towns have a stay and play, but it's a reduced rate. Here, this is a really exciting thing for us, and we see that. We're also getting a lot more of the disc golf players out there. I think this year, somewhere around 100 disc golf players have come out and played this year from all over. So we're looking at really building that platform up as well and creating a...since that's free to the general public and to our members, we're looking at incorporating that in that stay and play, in that whole message scenario. We've hosted a huge wedding this year. A lot of that, a lot of those people, about 100 of those guests stayed in a hotel here. We're looking at really marketing that next year as well. We think if we can have bigger weddings out there, you're going to run into, you know, more stay and play, more hotel stays, and again, the payback on that. The reason why I'm coming here is to see if we can't retrieve some more money or increase that funding so that we can go ahead and fix more of these irrigations so that our guys can then focus on maintaining the golf course, turning it into a really neat, decent golf course for people to play. We have some other things that are coming around the corner, I think, will increase that profitability for the city and bring more players out to the golf course itself. If you would make it a national golf course for New Mexico, we could use 100,000 people. But we think it's a real good asset for the town of Raton, and we want to continue driving that business. And part of that is to make sure that the course stays green, and we can put more assets into other things. So we're looking at asking for another $20,000. I have a breakdown of how that would work and why we need some of that money. I think we can extend what we've done before. Last time we had $25,000. Some of that money went into fixing some mainline breaks that arose during that period of time that we needed to get up and running so we can keep water running. And now, we really want to try to go after fixing more of those valves and so that we can continue to keep the grass green out there. And if you have any questions on any of the data out there, I'd be glad to sit down with you one-on-one, or if you have any questions, I'll answer them now.
Joe, I just want to commend you. I actually got to play some this year.
Good.
And of course, I have to say, look, as good as I've ever seen it. And I commend you guys for what you did. I really appreciate the thorough report. You know, in the past, we've got things written on paper and not really could tell what was done. I appreciate what you've done, and I just commend what you guys have done.
Well, thanks. Thanks.
I think it's a great asset for the community, and I appreciate, you know, the figures that you guys have with the stay and play. And it is looking great. I have two kids out there golfing. But I guess my question is, is this it? You know, the city can only fund for so long, and we have other ideas for our non-promotional funds, you know? We have other projects, future events, centers and things that we're trying to save some money towards. So that's my question is, does this resolve all the issues? Does this complete the project?
Well, I would say ultimately no, but that doesn't necessarily mean we'd have to come back here. I think what we're trying to do with...we've got a grant that came by from the Laird Foundation. I think that's probably going to help eliminate some of this extra funding that we might need. You know, the system is old. It was put in in 1991. It's really gone through its process. I can probably tell you that from all accounts, you're probably looking at a million-dollar replacement of that irrigation system. So it might not be, but hopefully, what we've got going on and what we're planning on doing moving forward, I think those funds will be far less than what we would need in the future. But I would never say never, just due to the fact that that's a big project out there. There's a lot of water that needs to be poured on that grass, and we really do appreciate the partnership that we do have with the city on putting that irrigation system in and helping us run that irrigation system. Part of it, we had a pony pump run out, and that's part of the leakage that happens every day out there. You know, we'll have a leak, and that pony pump kicks on every hour or every 20 minutes, and it wears out that pump. And I'm not sure what the cost on that pump was, but it's not easy to go back and replace pumps. And so the idea of fixing these valves and fixing these problems helps stop that and prevent that from happening so that the water pressure stays the same in those pipes. Right now, I have a mainline break out there currently. It's a little tiny leak. We got the hole dug, but, you know, it's holding steady. We'll be turning water off here pretty shortly, probably...hopefully, we can run another month. I'd like to see that and pour millions more gallons of water out there for us, for the city and for us. But that's going to come to an end with the cold weather pretty soon here. So the nice thing about taking this money and putting it prevent that from happening so that the water pressure stays the same in those pipes. Right now, I have a mainline break out there currently. It's a little tiny leak. We got the hole dug, but you know, it's holding steady. We'll be turning water off here pretty shortly, probably, hopefully, we can run another month. I'd like to see that. And pour millions more gallons of water out there for us, for the city and for us. But that's going to come to an end with the cold weather pretty soon here. So the nice thing about taking this money and putting it in now is we're not interrupting golf players, we're not interrupting anything else. Keep an employee out there working if we can do it ourselves. If we have to go back out to a bid system, you know, then ultimately, we'd have to go down that path. But that's kind of the goal, is to, you know, keep somebody else employed, put the system in now so when we turn it back up in spring, we've got a lot more water pushing out on the ground out there with a lot less, having the system that the city helped put in, the irrigation system and the clocks and the computer system out there, and let that do the job instead of having to go out there at 6:00 in the morning and turning water on. So manually.
I would hope maybe with the push with New Mexico for outdoor economics.
Correct.
And perhaps some grant money may come available, or more funding can come available that we could tap into, Joe, so.
And the cool thing about it is, we might have a full year of revenue out there going forward. And I think, you know, that's a future thing that we're looking at doing, and hopefully, that will help solve a lot of some of those problems. We do have other issues, and I brought the fish and game with me on that, but you know, I want to go through this piece first and maybe get on the agenda for next commission to talk about the elk and the deer and the turkeys. It's great to have all those animals out there. And I have a little packet. I'll just leave with you. And then, you know, if you have any questions for the fish and game, but we're working together in tandem to try to fix some of these problems. I don't have, I don't know if they have a gun for everyone. You see some of the damage, and most of the damage is on the greens. And the greens are the most costly thing we have out there. To replace a green would be $40,000, $50,000, you know, if we had to replace it. So to fix all these, this damage all the time takes a lot of effort and energy. And part of the reason why we don't have a lot of, you know, play from Trinidad players coming down or even participating in our tournaments is some of this damage is during our golf tournaments. And so to try to eliminate some of that would be nice. But that's another story for another day.
Sure. Any other questions for Mr. Pobor?
Yeah, my, I know these are your parts, if you have a storage area during the downtime.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we have a big storage bin that, you know, it's 40 by 60 currently. We have a lot of our equipment in there, golf carts in there and things like that. But yeah, we made room for that. We're getting rid of all the old stuff that we haven't used. They've kept all the old irrigation parts, and some of those we have manipulated off and tried to use on the current system. But parts and parts, the pieces and parts for these old valves are starting to go away. The little baffles that no longer are needed in the newer version. You know, the selenoid is about $80 for an old selenoid for one of our valves, where a new valve is about $150 currently. But I've seen them get down to that $99 range in the November-December timeframe. And that's, it's one of the reasons why I'm coming. I really want to make sure that we use the money at the right time and save the city money, not necessarily overspend the money. And that's kind of what I'm doing.
Well, I have to agree with Neil that in the past, we've asked for reports of what's going on, and this is an excellent report.
Thank you.
And I'm a proponent that we should continue with this irrigation system.
You're not being a golfer. I have to agree, it's a great asset for the community.
Well, thanks.
And I would like to definitely, I totally agree, but it definitely encouraged, you know, the use of grant funds and whatnot, especially if the future comes and the city plans some bigger projects with those monies.
And we're looking into, there's a few out there that we can, we're starting to dig into. I know Devin is working hard at that. He's found a couple side grants that we might be able to work on. And that might be where we would tear out the old infrastructure and put in a new infrastructure. And I think that would be very, very helpful. What I'm looking at is the next two years, growing and growing this business and growing the memberships as well as the out-of-town heads and beds. You know, that's really what I'm looking to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
So move.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for the Raton Golf Course for the 20,000. I guess my question is, has this been brought to the Rogers Tax Board yet?
Mayor and Commission, this has not been discussed, the current request with the Rogers Tax Board. I believe the previous request might have been, this is, the request is non-promotional. And so those typically, I think, would come directly to the Commission. And we have a situation here currently, and we've talked about this over the past year and for a little while in the future, we don't have any debt service for the non-promotional. But it is typical that you would finance facilities like a convention center, visitor center, those type of things with some portion of the non-promotional funds, and then that would be dedicated to debt service for a period in the future, 10 years or 20 years. We don't have that currently because we paid off debt that was used to construct the visitor center back in 1998. So I think that, as I've talked to some of you, we would go through a process now of really evaluating what our bigger needs are for those facilities. This is how we maintain, upgrade, or construct facilities like the visitor center, convention center. We now hold title to the Railroad Depot, which we got for the purpose of renovating that to improve that Amtrak or that multimodal experience. Non-promotional funds have been used on the Shooter Theater, some of the improvements that Mr. Donati had mentioned to you, and other facilities as well. So I think that we're looking at a planning period where we evaluate what we want to do in the future, and then we make a 20-year decision. But currently, we're accruing those funds. They're not going to debt service, so that gives the Commission some flexibility in the short term. And I think that we'll work on more of a long-term plan as we go. I think all of these buildings probably have some needs currently, and we want to get to that evaluation and then, you know, discuss the findings of that here at a later date. And I'm thinking that's, you know, could be a six-month or a year-long process, but we're going to be faced with some decisions. But you do have some discretion in this area currently.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I just had a question to clarify. On page three, at no, on page four, it notes that they're asking for the 20,000 plus. The current balance is 2,894.85. Is that, are we approving both of those things or just the one? Clarification.
That balance is still available to them under an existing purchase order.
From the last one?
Yeah.
Mayor and Commissioner, I think you had authorized that before, and this is your discretion. You could do what you want to with that, but you could say, you know, we'll keep that in the project plus additional funds. But again, that's your discretion.
No, I think we should just keep that there.
From the previous agreement?
From the previous agreement, yeah. Why should they have a little override on the valves?
Well, I do have some invoices I haven't turned in yet, so that's part of that. So some of that would already be taken up in that, I need to get with. Originally, that PO was set for one company, and since they're no longer in that project anymore, we're using, you know, local and wind supply is the other one that I've ordered some parts from, just for fixes that we needed to have fixed out there.
Any other questions or discussions? Make a motion to approve the Rogers Tax Non-Promotional Funding Request for Raton Golf Course Irrigation Improvement. You got a second?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 20,000. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commission, I might mention that we have had a number of talks with New Mexico Game and Fish about some of the wildlife problems, particularly on the golf course, but in that area in general. And I think that the discussion has been that there is a city ordinance that would prohibit the discharge of weapons within the city limits. And the question would be, would the city commission consider that ordinance? And I would say that it's an ongoing problem. We really haven't brought that to the commission before. But evaluating the ordinance, I think it's a simple revision that I can bring to the commission pretty quickly. That may be, you know, the hunt may be anticipated. Currently, it takes a while to revise an ordinance, so I don't know if that's timely for this year, but I'll put something together and bring to the commission. And I think that it will look like, you know, if New Mexico Game and Fish authorizes a special hunt, a depredation hunt, and would, you know, provide the expertise in that, that we would consider, you know, an exception to that ordinance provision.
I'll just throw that at you, and going back to your funding piece, that would help, some of that money would be available to us to sell those tags or auction them or whatever the mechanism is. And that would help fund future irrigation issues, putting into a slush fund to, you know, maybe ultimately build to that, you know, a complete renovation of the irrigation piece. So I think over time, that would be something that we would not have to come back to the board for. I mean, so that would be something we can look at.
Now, you know that it would generally take about three meetings to consider a change of ordinance. We'll have a lot of opportunity to talk about this, but I think the city and New Mexico Game and Fish, in our discussions, of course, safety of the public is the paramount consideration there. And so I anticipate we'll have those discussions going forward, but I'll try to get something in front of the commission that we can start talking about, hopefully, at our next meeting.
Hey, I have a quick question for any of the gentleman from the, can you trap, can you trap the deer and the elk? I've been told no.
No, we would not be looking at doing any sort of a trap and relocate for both of those species. Any place where we want elk or deer, we already have elk and deer, and so, you know, we would not be considering a trap and relocate.
All righty.
I think your neighborhood is running low on deer, aren't they?
Put them in the yard.
I got three bucks in my backyard right now. Item F, Delivering Act on Alcoholic Beverage Control Change of Officers Application for City of Raton Governmental Liquor License Number 90006. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commission, as we commonly do, I'm going to let Michael Ann talk about the real detailed stuff on this. But just a little background, the city of Raton had obtained a governmental liquor license, governmental liquor license for the service of alcohol at events to be held at the convention center. And then subsequently, we contracted out that alcohol service to Raton Country Club. So this issue would deal with the change of officers related to the country club's management of that alcohol service. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, this is something that we do every time their board of directors changes. Typically, they have a meeting in March, April, so you'll see the minutes from their board meeting attached. So they do have a new president, treasurer, and secretary. I believe Don Butler was the vice president last year. So one of the requirements with alcohol and gaming is, in December, we will submit our annual renewal application for this governmental liquor license. And when we do that, it kind of triggers a checklist that they go through. And we found this out last year. We didn't realize that because they lease our license, that every time they have change of officers, I've always done this application for the city commission after we have an election, but didn't realize that they also look at their board. Their board is registered on the Secretary of State's website, so whatever we approve this evening does match what is currently on record under their Raton Country Club nonprofit status, I believe, with the Secretary of State's office. So I am requesting that we approve this change of officers' applications so that I can submit it in advance of me doing our renewal on December 1st. So that way, everything will be in order once I finally do the renewal.
All ready?
And there is a $200 fee to do this.
Are there any questions for Michael Ann?
No, I want to approve the Alcohol Beverage Control Change of Officers Application for City of Raton Governmental Liquor License Number 90006.
Make a motion and a second to approve the change. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Item G, Delivering Act on Board of Directors to Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commission, going back a number of years, there is a joint powers agreement that exists between the city of Raton and Colfax County to provide zoning in the extraterritorial area. That's generally defined as three miles from the existing municipal boundary. And under that joint powers agreement, the zoning commission would be formed, and we have not had a meeting of the extraterritorial zoning commission for several years. So generally, how that looks is the city commission would appoint two members to the zoning commission. The county commission would appoint two members to the zoning commission, and then those four members would appoint a fifth member to the zoning commission. We haven't met because there really has not been business in the extraterritorial area regarding zoning, but we do anticipate that there will be some zoning issues coming up. And so the task of the Raton City Commission would be to appoint two members to represent city interests on the extraterritorial zoning commission. I see that we have one application in the packet. Is that the only application we have for tonight?
Yes, Randy Madison was out of town and would not be back until Friday.
So we need to appoint two, but we have one application to you tonight. We'll deal with the other one at the next meeting, and you have the application of Chris Candelario in the packet. Now, Mr. Candelario is a former city commissioner and is currently serving on the city planning and zoning board and has consented to represent the city on the extraterritorial zoning board. Those zoning ordinances are very similar, the issues are very similar, and Mr. Candelario has good knowledge of that ordinance.
I make a motion to appoint Chris Candelario to the EPD for going to.
Second. Motion and a second to appoint Mr. Candelario to the EPD. ZC, Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Do you want to take H and I together, Mr. Barry, or?
We do, Mr., yes, we do, Mayor.
All right. Item H and I, Delivering an Act on Billboard Lease Agreement between City of Raton and Elite Media Group LLC, DBA Lindmark Outdoor Media for property located at 905 South Second and for property located at the Armex. Mr. Barry.
Miss, Mayor and Commission, if I can make some general comments on both of these, there are two separate billboard lease agreements for billboard structures that have existed on property owned by the city of Raton, and they have been in place for a number of decades, maybe more than a couple of decades. And so we have a separate lease agreement for each site. One of these sites is located at 905 South Second Street. That is generally in the area of the old City Market Building. As you're going down the South Underpass and you're northbound, you see a billboard that is located on city property. And then the second would be a billboard that is located on property generally located at the Armex Building. And if you're southbound on I-25, you would see that billboard. Now, the city has had an existing lease agreement with Egan sign for that time. Mr. Egan is present here tonight. And also, we have Tom from Elite Media Group LLC doing business as Lindmark Outdoor Media. Additionally, we have the city attorney, Ray Florsham, who I asked to perform the due diligence on these two agreements. And generally, we would agree to lease the site for continued use of the billboards to Lindmark Outdoor Media. You see that there's a five-year term and renewable for an additional five-year term, and we would operate the billboards generally. And we would operate the billboards generally as they have been up till now. I believe that the lease amount is $650 a year for each of those billboards. Does that sound right? So, gentlemen, I don't know if you want to make some comments or commissioners, if you have questions in regard to the agreement. Mayor, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Berry at this time?
I have several questions, just especially about the 905 South Second billboard. The way I'm reading this contract is that the city is owning the billboard. Is that correct? I want to make sure I'm perverting this correctly.
Ray, yeah, Tom or Ray, I don't know if y'all could maybe approach and answer any questions.
Mayor and Commissioners, staff, thank you for your time this evening. No, the actual structure itself would belong to Lindmark Outdoor Media. It's just that the property belongs to the city. But no, the structure itself belongs to Lindmark Outdoor and will continue to belong to Lindmark Outdoor. Should the lease terminate for any particular reason, we would remove the structure.
Okay, so you are the current owners of the billboard?
We... Yes. The billboard previously was owned by Raton Sign. Lindmark Outdoor Media purchased Raton Sign back in the end of June. And we... Part of our letter of intent to purchase is that the lease be in place for both of those signs. And so that's what this is. There really is no change to the lease other than the checks will come from Lindmark Outdoor instead of Raton Sign.
Yes, since it's been so long, I'm curious about the original contract with the signage on the property and if it was meant to be for Time Memorial or if there was a limit on that time that the signs were on the property, you know, at some... That's my question.
And Joe or Ray, I don't know if you could answer, if you could field that. What's the difference between the current agreement and the previous agreement as far as term or time period?
The original agreement had a termination period on it. This is a new company coming in, bite out Raton Sign. We put in, as best I can do, a termination part. It's not permanent. So if that answers your question, yes, it's there, it's a permanent. No, it's not. We own the property. They have the signs. It's our property. And it's with it, we made sure that we put in, if this commission decides to terminate, they can do so. That make sense?
Kind of. I don't know if anyone else understands it better, but...
So I think maybe the question I would ask is what happens after the tenure period?
Well, after the tenure period, as it reads, they're going to have to come back renegotiate with us.
Yes.
Because my concern is with the 905 South Second Street property being such a... I mean, we used to be able to advertise town events and things on there. And I guess the policy has changed where it's advertising for the bank, which is, you know, who's running that.
Me. Sorry. The way that sign has always worked since forever is that Raton Sign Company leases that out to an entity. Generally, it has always been a bank, one of the local banks. And the way it works is that the contract that Raton Sign Company has with the leasing entity is that we provide 52 messages per year, so one message per week. What the entity chooses to put on there is in their control. We simply post what they want. For a long time, they did post a lot of community events. But it got to the point where the waiting list was six months long to get a message on the board. And they didn't have any time for themselves to post their business messages up there. So they kind of started cutting back on the number of public messages that they have. The last one, FNB of New Mexico, since they put a nice big digital display at their main office down here, with their branch here in Raton, started putting most all of the community-based messages on their digital and mostly bank messages on the City Market station.
My question is, what is Lindmark's plan for that sign?
Obviously, we're purchasing it as an asset to use as we see fit. In the lease, it does specify some things that we cannot, we wouldn't anyway, but we would not, we can't put on there advertising any kind of marijuana products, any pornography. We don't do that anyway, so it's not a problem. We will come in and rebrand it to our specifications. It will be painted. It will be identified as a Lindmark billboard. It will be converted to something that we use. Most people don't know how billboards work. Essentially, a billboard vinyl is put on whatever advertisement the customer wants to put on there. It's printed on a vinyl, like a big tarp. And the tarp is placed on that particular structure. The current configuration of both of these, well, actually, the one, the Armex location, is not going to really take that much to convert to our specifications. The one at City Market will take some tweaking from us. We're going to have to go in there and take some stuff off and reconfigure it so that it fits billboard vinyls. The location will be up for sale to whoever wants to, whatever advertiser wants to purchase it. Obviously, the bank will be given, you know, the same opportunity as anybody else to contract with us, to put their advertisement on it. We don't change things out every week. We're based out of Roswell, and so we can't send somebody up here every week. Plus, we don't do changeable letters. That's just not how our billboards work. So we'll come up here, we'll rebrand it, reconfigure it. If the bank wants to keep it, we'll produce whatever vinyl they want. If they don't, we'll put up a vinyl that says "available." And whoever wants to purchase it, then can purchase it.
I just have concerns about that being a big vinyl billboard in our downtown. I guess that's my biggest...
The size itself will not change. It's going to be essentially the same.
It's still very visually impactful coming to our historic district. So that's my main concern.
If I could say something, the way that that letter change or copy change is taken place every week now has gotten to be a very, very old style of doing. And over the years, that has become a very expensive way of doing it, i.e. labor costs, names of the letters, names of board, and those types of things. So it won't be long, it won't be happening that way.
Right.
Anyway, it's just a function of our times.
I'm curious if the city could have first right of refusal on that billboard contract or something.
You mean if the... Should the city want to...
The vinyl, like if we wanted to do some kind of welcoming billboard or use it, you know, a branded thing for the city, I think it could be a good thing. I just... I've been driving by a huge billboard in our historic downtown area. Just my concern.
You know, if I might, Commissioner raises a very good point. I did not anticipate what you raised is they want to change it from what it is to say six stories. You're correct. We'd have a problem. That's not contemplated. That's a very good point. The second part of it is, were you not too want to lease it to them? They're two separate. The coming into town of this, they're two separate leases. You could say, we don't want to do City Market, and then it comes to an end. And then the billboard comes down, they can remove theirs. So those are those two issues are very good points you raise. Now, I don't know, and I guess a third point you raise is another good point, is it going to go to digital? When I go by for the last five years, let's say, I'm young, is it's always been, they put it up, but they're going to go into electronic advertising, whatever. That's another good point you raise. And that's not been contemplated. I'm sorry, but I did not contemplate that.
I can tell, I could address that. We do not have plans to convert that to a digital billboard. We just, we're fairly confident that we couldn't get the rates here to justify that. To convert that to a digital board is going to be north of $150,000. And that's quite an investment for us, and we just really don't think we can get the rates. So as far as converting that to a digital, it's not going to happen. And the size itself, the size itself will not change because it's permitted for a certain size through the state of New Mexico NMDOT. We cannot change that size. Now, if the city would like to, the city would have the same opportunity as any other customer we have. If the city wants to rent the billboard for the going rate, that's fine, too. And, you know, I'm not in sales, but I'm sure our sales manager would be able to figure that out pretty quick.
Sure.
So, yeah, if the city wanted to rent it, yeah.
So if we do that, and the city takes an option that they want to rent that space, on top of that, we'll also get in the rent for the property.
We'd have to pay them, yeah. Yeah, but they're paying us. So it's like our other billboard where they have a billboard, not you, but a different company has a billboard on our property, and we pay them to use the billboard on our own property. Which, part of me says, why not just take the billboard down, the city put in some kind of structure as part of the signage thing and not have to pay for our own billboard? Because $650 a year, I mean, the going rate for billboards, what we're paying on our billboard contracts is a lot. It's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that we're putting out for billboards to other companies. So just, I mean, the Armex one, I don't have as much of an issue with, you know. But this one in town, I just feel like it should be... I don't know what the best interest of the city is, I guess is what I'm asking.
I'm thinking it would be in the interest of the entire community if it were able to be hosting community events. And it could do a list of what's going to be happening at Schuler, what date, something like that. So, I mean, it's just something to consider, whether or not it would be Schuler...
Next question, she mentioned that. Continually changing it, would that be expensive, like you said?
Yes.
If you're changing it every week or every week?
Yeah, no, I was thinking...
To any time. I think it would be cost prohibitive.
It would be...
But you could post the entire Schuler season, not movies, but big music events that they are in town.
For how long will it be, is what I'm saying?
But who's going to lease that? Schuler Restoration going to lease that space, or are we going to lease that? I'm kind of on the thing with Commissioner Chavertly. We own the property. Why would we want to pay a lease on a billboard?
Right.
We have the property.
Well, I mean, yeah. I would think that that would be something that either Schuler Restoration or possibly Main Street do it. You know, then I think it's a productive billboard.
Well, and I could tell you that, so if, obviously, if we don't have a lease, the billboard will come down because we won't have anything there. I can tell you that if the city wants to put up a billboard, it's probably going to cost in the $50,000 range to replace that particular structure. So you might keep that in mind, too.
I'm just, I like the idea of changing message, David.
Yeah, because...
For the community, it's going to be costly.
Right, because there's a charge, there's a charge for the vinyl in installation. I think right now, it runs a couple of, like, $2 and some odd cents a square foot for the production of vinyl in the installation. Or actually, I think it's production plus install for every time you change it out.
For the first one, for how many years? We see you up there with your moving the letters around and it's in the message. But as far as spending the money from the city?
Yeah.
I think it would be cost prohibitive to have a change in sign.
Yeah, I don't think that we should be paying for that change of sign, but I can see a similar...
I mean, if we're going to approve the lease and all that, they do their thing. They find the customer and do their thing.
I mean, I don't know how many of y'all are business owners, but ultimately, we're in business to make money. You know, because we have, you know, our expenses, employees, benefits, everything else. Plus, we have to make a profit. So when you get right down to the brass tacks, we're in business to make money. So we're, you know, if we get it, we're going to sell it.
I have another kind of sideline question. So you purchased Raton Sign Company, correct? The whole company or just the billboards?
The boards.
Just, okay.
The boards have been in our family business for decades.
Right.
And it's time for those boards to move on to bigger and better things.
Okay.
Yeah, we purchased four, four boards from them.
Okay.
Plus, we already had two that we purchased from another company called Look. One of it is right down from the one he has on south, south of us on 25, and then on whatever that other street is that goes to Clayton.
647.
Thank you.
Well, I understand your concerns, Commissioner Chavertly, but I also know that, that, you know, there are older people who still count on billboards and appreciate them, so...
Oh, I'm not saying that there aren't people that use billboards. I'm not saying we should take down billboards by any means.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, so you have agreed to purchase these based on this lease agreement. So these two billboards, have they officially changed hands or is it depending upon the lease agreement?
It's depending on lease agreement. We have, the other two boards, we have purchased and paid for. We have not paid for these two yet.
Well, I personally would like to make a motion to postpone item H for further deliberation, but to approve item I.
Do you have a motion? We have a motion to postpone H, approve I.
I'll second that. I want to talk to you about it. I want to talk to all of you about it. So I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone item H, that would be the billboard on South Second, and to approve the lease for the Armex billboard at this time. Would that be postponed to the next meeting?
That's very...
November or 12th?
And that works for you?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's what they pay me for. I get to drive around and go to meetings.
Just some discussion, I think the board would like, the commissioners would like...
And if you have, obviously, if you, I mean, Mr. Berry has my contact information, Ray has my contact information. So if you've got any questions, just don't holler, don't hesitate to give me a shout. I'm always looking to answer whatever questions that y'all have.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close.
Mayor, just kind of reading Commissioner Chavis's mind, and Mr. Palmer said he would stay through the meeting in, you know, anticipation of getting the agreement executed. I don't know if the commission would entertain a five-minute recess and we could execute the one, and then, you know, the people that are waiting on that execution can go on their way. But just an idea for you.
I have no problem with that.
How was that, Ray? You're welcome.
We're in recess.
We're going to be talking for a long time.
So Robin went to get her notary stamp. She'll be right back. We've got two copies of that agreement. We can do that one.
Thank you. Item J, Delivering an Act on Engineering and Analytics Service Optimization Number Three to Raton Train Depot Side. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, you'll remember at the last meeting that we discussed that we had recorded the deed and other documents for the Raton Train Depot. And essentially, the depot was transferred from the ownership of BNSF Railway to the city of Raton. I think we also reported that we have some grant money from Federal Highway Administration in excess of $200,000 that we anticipate beginning work on the first phase of the renovation of that depot. And we anticipate that the renovation work would consist of pavement and drainage improvements outside the building because issues that actually change the building are going to require what we anticipate to be a pretty extensive review by the state Historic Preservation Office. So we have met with the state Historic Preservation Office, with Federal Highway Administration about doing the work outside in the parking area. And we think we can begin that in a timely manner. Now, the engineering task order that you have in your packet now really is one that the commission had approved some time ago, I would say several years ago. And we had begun work on that, but... ago, I would say several years ago, and we had begun work on that, but we really could not launch into that work until we had ownership of the building. Now, since that time, we have gone back out to RFP, awarded a new engineering contract, and signed a, a new engineering contract, and the rate schedule has changed slightly in that. So, we bring this task order back to you for the engineering work that would be associated with design of those improvements, pavement and drainage improvements. You'll see that it excludes environmental work, because that's an unknown at this point, and then a big part of that is the review by State Historic Preservation Office. We would anticipate that we would do that in-house. And so, bring this task order to you for your consideration. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Barry?
I'll make a motion to approve the authorization number three for the Raton Train Depot side.
A motion and a second to approve the authorization number three for the Train Depot side. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item K, deliberate an act on governmental project funding agreement between the city of Raton and the office of the state engineer for implementation of a feasibility level study to Lake Malloya Dam. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, this is related to potential improvements to Lake Malloya Dam, and a number of times we have talked about efforts at Lake Malloya Dam to address dam safety issues. This is a cooperative effort between the dam safety bureau. That's a bureau under the state engineer office and the city of Raton. The city of Raton is the owner of Lake Malloya Dam and the reservoir and the surrounding property. Now, for some time, we have asked the state engineer to participate by providing funding for improvements to Lake Malloya Dam, and our proposal to the, to the dam safety bureau was that they pay 80% of an improvement that would consist of removal and replacement of the crest structure on the existing service spillway. The, the service spillway is the concrete chute that's located on the face of the embankment. Additionally, we asked them to participate in improvements to the outlet piping, and we had, we have talked about a concern about outlet piping before. So, we've talked for some time, and the state engineer, the dam safety bureau has said, we will participate financially in the project. However, from an engineering standpoint, they really do not like having the service spillway on the embankment. They would like to see that relocated to the left abutment. The left abutment is the area where the auxiliary spillway is currently located. So, if you're driving across the dam and you get to the other side of the dam, and there's a large area that the dock is located, and people generally fish and park there, that's the auxiliary spillway. And so, they brought up the possibility of looking at relocation of the service spillway to that abutment area. So, that would be off the embankment. Now, in the course of our discussion with the state engineer office, the dam safety bureau, we arrived at a scope of work, and also we discussed this with our engineer, AECOM, who has done engineering for the city of Raton for a period of six years in regard to dam safety issues. And we decided that a scope of work for this would be an engineering investigation of that relocation to the abutment. It would consist of geotechnical borings, geotechnical evaluation, a seismic evaluation, and a cost estimate for that relocation. Now, we know that that's going to be a big project, much bigger than the replacement of the crest structure that we had proposed, but we don't know what that would cost. And so, this evaluation would, would provide us with an estimate of that cost. So, under this agreement, the state engineer office or the dam safety bureau has agreed to pay all of the costs of this engineering evaluation. The city of Raton would not pay any of the cost, and they will directly hire the engineer. It will still be AECOM to perform this evaluation. And the agreement that you have states that the city of Raton would allow the, the dam safety bureau's contractor to enter the property and drill on the abutment to get the information that's necessary. So, we anticipate that the agreement between those two parties will be in excess of $240,000. You have seen two different numbers in the agreement. That's just a typographical error that came to us from the state engineer office. We did not catch that before it went in your packet. So, the actual number that the, the state will pay AECOM will be somewhere between $235,000 and $242,000. But the important part is, the city of Raton is not paying any of that expense. We're simply allowing this work to take place on our dam, our property close to the dam. And I'll answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions for Ms. Murray?
I'll make a motion to approve governmental project funding agreement between the city of Raton and the office of the state engineer for implementation of a feasibility level study to Lake Malloya Dam.
One second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I would just add that with your approval, we will execute our part of this, send this back to the state of New Mexico. We anticipate that this work will begin very soon, within the next couple of weeks, and they'll try to get the field work done, you know, prior to bad weather occurring on the lake. We hope that we get some snow up there soon, but before it gets too cold, or we possibly get snow, we would anticipate that the contractor's ready to go, and this will happen pretty quickly.
Item L, deliberate an act on subrecipient grant agreement between the city of Raton and Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for 2020, excuse me, New Mexico WIP program. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, you can see under this proposed grant agreement between the city of Raton and the state of New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, the, the award is in the amount of $6,000. It's called a subrecipient grant agreement because the funds come from a federal source. And then, you can see the scope of work. So, this would cover a trip to WIP in Carlsbad, four personnel, funding for backfill or overtime for four Raton Fire Department personnel for discussion-based exercise, November 13th, funding for backfill overtime for four Raton Fire Department personnel, county employees for tabletop exercise in 2020, funding for backfill overtime for 12 Raton Fire Department personnel for cameo training. I'm not sure of the word county in item number three. I think that's probably an error, but all of those, those four tasks add up to the $6,000.
I will move to approve subrecipient grant agreement between city of Raton and Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for 2020 New Mexico WIP program.
One second. I have a motion and a second to approve the grant agreement between Raton and the Department of Homeland Security. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item M, deliberate an act on CYFD fiscal year 21-24 juvenile continuum grant fund application.
Mayor, Commissioner, this item is Michael and Antinucci country, so I'm going to turn that over to the city clerk.
Mayor, Commissioner, in your packet, you'll see, as we've done in years past, we do an annual application process with the CYFD, and this is the funding for the juvenile justice program, which we've had probably going on close to 10 years here in Raton. There have been a few changes with the grant application process that actually are very favorable to us. We would be applying for four years of funding, so we wouldn't have to be doing this annually. I think our program has proven to be successful and is somewhat of a model around the state. The programs that we offer would continue to be the girls' circle, boys' council, and the restorative justice. They have brought back the administrative fee. This year, we received a 4%. Next year, and for four years, would be 5%. So, that would be part of the application. And then, the funding also goes towards funding the position that we have for juvenile justice coordinator. That position is currently held by Danielle Archuleta, and she's done a fantastic job, I would say, growing these programs. We currently, so every year, we do go out for RFP. We do have two vendors that provide these services. One of them is HRDA, and then the restorative justice component, the vendor currently awarded that contract is called Peace Through Education, and that's Immigreen. But we would still continue to go out to RFP because these amounts, at least for the girls' circle, boys' council, are well over the $60,000. So, it's required for procurement purposes to do an RFP. There is still a matching component of 40%. Generally, that's in-kind monies that we track every month, and that is monitored by CYFD that we are meeting the, the match requirements. So, we would be requesting, our total continuum budget would be $275,774.94 would be the request for year one, and then the same for year two, three, and four.
Any questions for Ms. Murray?
I will comment that I recently been hearing good reports from other people around the state on this program, and so I believe it's a good one. So, I will move to approve resolution 2019-54, oh, or one, CYFD FY 21-24 juvenile continuum grant fund application.
One second. Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve the CYFD fiscal year 21-24 continuum grant fund application. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate an act on resolution 2019-54 authorizing the certification of city of Raton 2019 capital asset inventory. Michael Lamb, I think you're in charge of this one, aren't you?
Yes. So, we have postponed this item the last couple of meetings, and I apologize for that, but I think we finally have it ready to present to the commission. You will see that I've provided you with a memo, and so, back in April, Records Consultants, Inc., is the contracted vendor that we use to do our fixed asset inventory. They work here April 8th through the 12th. And so, part of that process, when they come in, they have barcode scanners, and they go through all of our assets so that we can ensure that we have those in our inventory. So, in addition, all capital assets that have reached their useful lives could possibly be damaged, just wore out or missing. We do bring periodically to the commission resolutions for disposal of assets, and we did do a few of those this year. We have been talking. We need to probably do an auction, so that's something that we need to work with our department heads to do a large auction to kind of get rid of some of these surplus items that we have laying around. So, that's something we'll be talking about probably in this fiscal year. But I have attached for you an inventory analysis report, and this is just kind of an overview of our entire database of assets. You'll see that we do have 1,757 inventory items currently in our database, and an additional 577 that are classified as land improvements and buildings. In addition, I do keep a binder, and I kind of separate it by department, and so I have departmental listings of each department's assets as well, which is always available for review by the public or any of the commission. So, we will start making preparations here pretty soon for the spring to do another inventory. We usually schedule those dates in late November, early December so that we can get on their calendar. But if we look at the inventory analysis summary, part of the process is just comparing last year's ending balance with this year's beginning balance so that I can make sure that the reports, I can reconcile them. You'll see, I was showing a variance of $38,405, but I was able to identify that those two asset items, one being a cat loader and the other is a Polycom unit in the court, are actually re-barcoded items. So, you'll see under the disposal column, there's $38,405. So, at least I can explain what the variance is, and it really is a wash. So, it's just the way that it is reflected on the report. And then, I do run a capitalization report, and then also a depreciation report on all of our assets with values over 5,000. And so, in order to make sure things are reconciled, those reports need to match the ending balances that I, I've highlighted for you in yellow for all of our asset classifications over 5,000. So, those reports do match, and so, they're in balance. So, when the auditors come, part of their review is, I do provide them the actual depreciation schedules for all of our assets over 5,000. So, I'll be providing those individual reports for them, and they'll be here next week. So, that'll be probably a major component of our audit next week is just the fixed asset portion. So, is there any questions? The actual resolution and certification is a requirement in the state audit rule, so we do bring this to you annually to certify the city's 2019 capital asset inventory, and pretty much the policy and the process and what we follow to show that we're in compliance with those requirements.
Any questions for Michael?
Appreciate all this work.
Absolutely.
I do see one correction I need to make on the resolution. I think in the very last paragraph, it says, have you, have reviewed, approved, and certified the 2018 capital asset inventory. That should be 2019. So, I'll make that correction prior to it being signed.
Any other questions? Another ten motions. A motion and a second to about resolution 2019-54 authorizing the certification of the city of Raton's 2019 capital asset inventory. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item O, deliberate an act on resolution 2019-56, first quarter fiscal year financial report. Michael?
Mayor, Commissioner, in your packet, we also have the first quarter financial report. All of our funds have been reconciled through the month of September. You'll see on the financial summary that we provide our available cash balance in the general fund was $2,390,910. That figure is less the required 1/12 reserve. So, you'll see that we, as we have for probably the last year, two years, we exceed that minimum requirement as far as the 1/12 reserve. I've also provided you with our ending cash balances in all of the funds. The gross receipts tax collection for the month of October, we are showing 2.23% above our year-to-date budget projection, and that's for the, the general fund. So, for comparison purposes, when you look at the history that we provide with this report, it is difficult to compare the gross receipts distribution with the prior year, and that's mainly due to the decrease that we saw with the supplemental water GRT that took effect January of 2019. And then, of course, we do have a new tax increase for the economic development increment that will go into... that will go into effect January 1st of this year. So that does make it difficult for us to do any sort of meaningful comparison, but I think the most important thing for us is just making sure that we're in line with what we've projected for the budget, so that we know that we can meet those budget obligations. And then, as reported last month, we are receiving the distribution from the House Bill 6 and that's with regards to online sales. And so as we reported last month, the state has taken, I believe, like 24 million out of their general fund and that's being allocated to municipalities based per capita. And so our monthly distribution is $6,319. So, but it will take tax and rev a couple of years for that to be fully phased in. I think they called it destination-based coding for online sales. With regards to the tax increase that will be going into effect January 1, we are sending out our business license renewal notices in a few weeks, so we will be sending out a notice with that to all businesses. And we also will put something in the newspaper and go on the radio as well, just to alert everyone about that change. This quarterly report is due to DFA before October 31st, so we will make sure that it is submitted timely.
Any questions for Ms. Murray? Any other comments?
My plan, you've mentioned before that 2.23% that were above the budget projection. I know you've mentioned that going into the winter months, we have to have a little bit of leeway there. How is that looking for that leeway that we need?
Well, this particular distribution report would reflect August sales, so the one that we collect in November would be representative of September. And we do know that we had quite a bit of construction still ongoing, probably well up until the month of October. So I do anticipate that probably the distributions through December should continue to go on.
I think we prefer to be at 3% or 4% going into later months. If we're a little over 2%, which is not quite where we want to be, but it's not bad. We don't feel any panic out of that, but you know, 4% would be better.
I think we're in a better position this year than we were last fiscal year, so I think we're anxiously going to wait the one that we receive in November, hoping to see a little bit of an increase. Because we did have the filter plant project has been ongoing, the Hart Brilliant project just wrapped up a few weeks ago. What else have we had?
Well, there's some private construction going on out there and then like the filter plant project, it's not really affected by a change in weather. We're going to do an intensive amount of work over the winter months to try to get that project really towards the end. So I think that there's some other stuff when we get out there to the warmer months, but there's construction going on. Of course, the tourism-related business that we see in higher GRT in the warm months tends to slow down in the fall and then the winter kind of depends on how skiing goes. But you know, hunting season and skiing, we still have some tourism, but it tapers off some.
Thank you.
Motion to approve resolution 2019-56. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Item P, deliberate an act on resolution 2019-57, fiscal year 2024 budget adjustment number three. Michael?
Mayor and commission, in your packet we do have budget adjustment number three. We've completed our first quarter review, so most of these are just line item adjustments. We are proposing, we are in the process of doing interviews for the new economic development director position. So in anticipation of hiring an individual, we do need to create a new fund for that, which would mainly consist of the line items that I've listed here for you. And that's mainly just to kind of get the department going. I anticipate we probably, once we get the position in place, probably will come back with creation of some additional line items. But I definitely need to get most of this in place mainly for payroll purposes, so that once they've been hired, we can have a new fund and process their payroll. I've estimated it, based on eight months, I do anticipate that this is slightly less than a quarter percent of GRT, but I think, knowing that it goes into effect January 1st, we won't actually receive those distributions until March because of the two-month lag on the GRT. So I think between March and June, we'll generate enough revenue from the new tax to cover the salary and some of the travel and other expenditures that I've listed here. Possibly may need to purchase a new computer and some office equipment. Not real sure yet what we're going to need. But we would propose to do a temporary transfer out of the general fund to kind of establish this department until the new tax revenue starts to come in. And then prior to the end of the fiscal year, we could transfer those funds back to the general fund.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2019-57, fiscal year 20, budget adjustment number three.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 2019-57. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Item Q, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a meeting held today and I attended along with Raton Police Department and Raton Fire Department, attended at Miners Colfax Medical Center, involved personnel from the hospital and the county. We discussed updating of policies and procedures for the medical screening of detainees or persons that are transported, possibly by ambulance. And so we'll work with those entities as far as updating those policies and procedures and that will take place over the next couple of weeks or even a couple of months. The Public Works Crew has completed some work on Brilliant Avenue that would consist of a backfill of the new pavement that was completed by Northern Mountain Construction. Also, the Public Works Crew has completed repainting of bridge abutments at the South Underpass. They also painted a wall at the municipal building that we had a peeling paint problem on. They are in the process of winterizing some of the irrigated areas. This is a tough time of year because it's very dry and we may have some good weather and continue some irrigation, but when we get to some cold nights, we don't want to do damage to our irrigation system. So they're monitoring that pretty closely. And also they are beginning the process of the seasonal startup and maintenance of heating systems at various city buildings. I think we had talked about some work going on at the convention center specifically. The, moving down the list, the city has submitted their application for funding to New Mexico Main Street for construction of Phase 3 of the Raton Great Blocks Project. Main Street, when they were here recently, had stated that out of their capital outlay allocated by the legislature, they will be making awards for Main Street projects and we had a hearback from New Mexico Main Street on that process, I would say, within a month to a month and a half. So I'll report to the commission on that. The city has been notified by North Central New Mexico Economic Development District of a notice of funding availability for developing, updating, and implementing affordable housing plans. This notice comes from the Mortgage Finance Authority and as the mayor had stated when we met with Lisa Sadio, she had told us that this would be coming out. We have worked on what I anticipate to be a joint plan with Colfax County that would require a 20% match to be split between the city of Raton and the county. That would amount to $4,000 for the city of Raton. I will work with the county and the North Central as far as submission and then report back to the city as far as action by Mortgage Finance Authority at a later date. I am working with Better City in the preparation of a grant application for EDA funds. EDA funds are a funding program through the federal government and we're looking at some downtown revitalization projects, so we're working on that. I'll report back to the commission in some detail as we're ready to go forward with that project. I'm working with Jeff and the Center for Community Innovation in regard to an application for Volkswagen's, Volkswagen settlement funding. So we anticipate a submission of an application in the near future and that would be related to an electronic vehicle charging station that we would propose to locate in the area of the multimodal center, the rail depot. So I'll report back to you on that as well. The city took delivery of a new transfer ambulance. That's something that we've talked about here over some time. It was delivered yesterday. I believe the ambulance would require a little additional equipping, but we do have that and should be ready to put in service shortly. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry? Mr. Charlie, anything else?
I just want to say I visited with the Cub Scouts last week and talked to them about being commissioner and we have some wonderful citizens on our way, grownups, who do just things in that.
Mr. Godwin, Mr. Charlie, Mayor Broten.
I'm fit, thank you.
I have nothing either. Just moving in.